Thank you. Okay. We're here this evening on Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. Our last meeting for the summer until we continue again in September. So we have a number of public hearings. Our first public hearing, I think it's a continued public hearing on Nickage. I hope I'm saying it correctly. Someday I may get it correctly. Got it? Excellent.
Good job.
60 Algonquin Drive. Got that one too. I mean, I'm really on the roll here. Application for a site development plan approval for construction of a swimming pool. This has been continued since June 21. So, good evening, Robert Sherwood, Mensteed Architect. We're presenting the client, Josephine. And since the last time we were in front of you, we did revise and do some stormwater. Updated the stormwater plan. We also updated my site plan and tried to give you guys a detailed display of overall the development that it's heard since the original approval. I guess I'll just open it up. If you have any questions on that or you want me to run through the. I think we've seen it, but do we have anyone out here in the public interested in this application? You know, we've heard it several times, so I had one question and I just couldn't find it on the map. It's there somewhere. I think it was a tree for a white oak. Where is that located? I mean, if that's going to be on the map.
So, thank you, Bob Cioli. Because I didn't pick it up. It was, I believe, on the engineering near one of the rain gardens. And it didn't appear in the landscape plan. So, I'm about to learn this. I just wanted to measure and speciate the tree. And maybe you could show on the plan approximately.
As you pull into the driveway, it's on the right hand side where we're going to put one of our rain gardens. Yeah, okay. It's right there. Right inside. Yep, okay. That explains I wasn't looking at that area. I was looking where your pool was. Yeah, no, it's staying here. I apologize. I don't like landscape plan as well. No, not at all. Not at all. Okay. Do we have questions or issues? Dennis, you had a memo? Anything that you wanted to highlight?
Sure, just, there's just a couple of comments to the plan. They all revolved around that particular tree. Just to have it consistent between two plans to add to the plan list in similar format. That tree, 20 inches in diameter, can be removed and indicate that at that diameter form, replacement trees are required. And it would be good to add a note, you know, based on your planning that you're technically exceeding. But I'll just say for this, this is moving the tree replacement requirements. And then just capture that administratively. When you, you know, apply for the building permit, you should apply for a tree removal permit at that time as well for that one tree.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Dennis. Thank you. Sabrina, did you have any comments?
You're on mute.
Oh, she's on mute, I guess. Okay.
You're on mute, Sabrina.
I was having difficulty because I'm sharing the plan on the screen. I do not have any additional comments. Everything that I needed has been incorporated as conditions into the resolution. So there's really nothing that's outstanding.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Sabrina.
No, that's okay. I think that the biggest issue is the addition of the build, the additional, you know, they're consistent with the building coverage as previously discussed. The issue is the variance for the development coverage. 9,328 square feet.
Right, so it needs to be consistent with the variance that they have.
Correct. And so before, in the resolution, it's recommended that before the site plan is signed, that the applicant does receive that variance.
Yep, okay.
Okay, everything else is consistent with the town code. And that's really the only outstanding condition that I had.
Okay, great. Thank you. You guys have comments?
Yes. Good afternoon, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Basically, stormwater comments for the plan. I had A through G outlined a lot of technical comments in which they should be revised, which there were some items that didn't meet the EC manual. And also to ST2, the SWIP, I have comments to which are A through D, which have to be revised as well. Then there's ST3. I would recommend because of these two rain gardens, in my experience, I've seen several, over the past several years, get filled in by landscapers where, that's my phone ringing and I can't shut it off. I'm going to throw it out the window soon. But I would recommend that they prepare some sort of declarations so they stay maintained and healthy from here to in perpetuity. Because again, a lot of times they sell the house, the new landscapers come in and they completely fill in the rain garden and then we have nothing. So that's ST3. ST4, the subject property is located in the East of Hudson. They have to apply for the SWIP for this erosion and sedimentation control. And then they just have a few general comments, GC1, GC2, GC3, just recording, just regarding the limits of disturbance and labeling the clearing and ready to make it clear on both sets of plans. And also to Sabrina's point with the, with the problems we've been having and all the new applications coming in, I would recommend highly that before they get their CO, their surveyor comes in and as-built everything prepares a development coverage calculation. So we have a good survey. We have the development coverage calculations done by a surveyor stamped. So we know exactly what they built, so there's no confusion moving forward. Because as you know, a lot of times things are built, be known to us. And then a new owner comes in and they, right off the bat, they have development coverage problems. So that's GC, GC3A. And those are my comments. And also too, I have no objection to any of these being included in the resolutions, which they have been incorporated as well. And that is my comments for tonight, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Jennifer, on the declaration that Bob referenced on the rain garden, do we have a form that we can, you know, provide to the applicant so they don't have to ram at the wheel? And something that you like and will be used?
I'm not sure if we have one that Newcastle has done before, but I know that I've seen them in other communities. So I think that we can, we can find a sample to provide to the applicant. So wheels doesn't have to be reinvented.
Yeah, I think we had something like that, Bob, when we did Meadow Hill Lot 1. I recommend.
Oh, you're right, yes.
I believe we should have a boilerplate we can provide. You know, I recommend when they go through these resolutions, conditions, just please have them contact me. I have the enviable task to check these things off and I'll coordinate and be a liaison between the attorneys and the town. If you don't mind, guys, it just streamlines things a little bit more.
Super, okay, very good.
I have a thought about this kind of rain garden thing, if I might.
Sure.
I don't, I don't think we have anything in the anything that we have available in a way of making sure that things get done. I don't think the rain gardens is really attached to that in a good way. And if the, these people that are coming on the property and chopping it all up or bending it or whatever, there should be a sign warning, maybe. And, you know, that there will be consequences if, if, you know, the thing gets all messed up. But I'm not good with law.
So.
I think the declaration goes a long way toward that. More than that, that gives us at least the written document for enforcement in future years. If such an issue arises. I don't know if we have, I don't think we do anything out in the field to, to mark the rain garden. Like in some cases, we do the wetland boundaries or we put some stones down or whatever, some markers. I don't know if that really would be fairly obnoxious actually, you know, in the middle of someone's yard.
Typically, on larger projects or commercial properties, there's the stormwater management, you know, maintenance agreement where it's basically a declaration and an easement agreement. And it's a document whereby the property owner agrees for themselves and future owners that the stormwater facilities will be maintained in accordance with proper protocols. And in the event that they're not so maintained, the easement is granted to the, to the town to come onto the property, do the maintenance and charge that back to the property owner. Typically, we don't see that on, on single-family home properties. I think there may have been one or two exceptions over the course of the, of the years for, for more extensive development. But that is a mechanism that's out there. But I think this, the declaration that Bob had suggested, you know, serves the same purpose for the purposes of the swale, to notify property owners, future property owners, that it's there and, and sets standards for maintaining it in place.
Well, yeah, but if it's damaged by an outside party, the homeowner should, if it's signed, there's good signage and it gets wrecked anyway. You know, there would be something to back it up that, hey, you damaged this, you're going to have to pay for it.
Yeah, the homeowner is always responsible, regardless if it's like, you know, one of their landscaping, you know, contractors or something like that that comes onto the property, that ultimately the homeowner is responsible for maintaining the property in accordance with the approved plans.
Okay. Any other comments from board members, questions from board members? If not, are there any questions from members of the public? Any hands raised for remote participants? Nothing? Okay, thanks for not seeing any. Is there a motion then to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
A draft resolution before us? I think this is. Got someone hissing at us? Oh, we're used to it. Okay. Do we have any questions or changes? Anyone have any questions, issues on the resolution? Yes, not? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, motion carried, you're all set. Perfect. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
God bless you guys. My birthday today, my kids said that I'm going to make you a cake and I'm going to tell them, you're going to get a pool.
I appreciate it. God bless you.
Everybody do the exact, thanks for your help. You're welcome.
Okay, we go to the next public hearing. This is. Is that the door or was that?
A happy yes?
Yeah, okay. We don't really see that much enthusiasm. Yeah, and on a high note. Sorry. We have another public hearing. This is McGinty, 10 Frog Rock Road. The application for a site development plan approval to legalize an accessory apartment and expand the footprint and the garage.
Good evening. I'm Alan Pilchey, LP Engineering.
More enthusiasts, please, Alan.
Also with me. It's a great time. All pretty tonight, yes. How's that? Much better. So, I'll just briefly go through the modifications to the plan. The building and development coverage, of course, was exceeded what was permitted. And so what we have done is provided various modifications to bring it down. This is the exceedance since 2007, which is the baseline which we use. I'll just basically review the chain, what we had done.
Do you have a chance? Just this? This shows it, but also if you go to, I think, figure one or shall we put on the screen?
Sabrina, can you pull?
I think figure one or figure two. I think there's figure one, figure two, figure three. I think it's on figure two maybe? Or one of those site plan drawings? O dash one or?
No, those are the elevations.
Or C101 would be well. In the site plan, C101.
I see SB1, 100.
I'm getting there, hang on.
It's okay.
Which one did you want?
C101 would be great if it's there.
It's there.
Well, that'll be fine. I guess if you have the, that's an overall.
This is 01. Do you want C101?
If you had C101.
I have them all. Hang on.
C101 would be great. All right. That's perfect. I like that. That's good. So the modifications to the plan include the driveway being narrowed in width from its 16 feet to about 14 feet. You see that on that little red hatch adjacent to the driveway on the north side of it. Walkways between the driveway and pool patio will be removed entirely. The terrace and wall on the south side of the pool house will also be removed. That's actually, the pool house is, that's a pool up there and there's a pool house just below it. And that's that kind of like arm that looks like this is going to be removed. The walkway between the tennis court is a platform viewing area and the pool patio will be removed. The walkway from the driveway circle to the front door is going to be modified as part of the destruction of the accessory apartment. A walkway in the rear of the garage will be removed. That's kind of like on the bottom right of the drawing. A walkway on the north side of the house to off-site, that's a kind of like upside-down U-shaped loop will be removed. That's to the north of the house. And finally, the pool patio on its north and west sides will be narrowed to a three-foot wide strip, which will, it'll help with the maintaining of the.
That's what I need, one of those digital ones.
Thank you. That's the narrow, that's the removal of this portion of the patio. So this is a walkway between the tennis court viewing area and that's going to be removed. That's kind of like the U shape that I was saying before of the, of the walkway. There's a walkway behind the house of obviously to be removed. The garage modification includes the walkway to the front door, which is actually quite wide right now, will be removed. I mentioned the driveway and all of the walkways going from the driveway to the pool patio. And there's a whole patio here and space on the west side of the cool house, which is located here. That's also going to be removed. I'll say with all these changes, the development and building coverage will be reduced by 2,230 square feet. A reduction coverage by 9.3%. It represents, I calculate, an increase of 720 square feet from what it was in 2007, which I believe would put us under the threshold. So we have made a real attempt to try to bring it down to, I'll say, a more manageable number. And with that, I'm more than happy to retain any comments, questions that you may have. Okay.
Well, we also documented the, we also documented, as requested, the pre-existing non-conforming conditions that predated the adoption of the current ordinance.
Right, of the stormwater ordinance, yes, right. And I think that was confirmed also internally at the staff level by our building inspector as well. So that's, that kind of puts you in safe haven. Grandfather on this, yeah. Okay. Sabrina, you have some comments?
My only comment really was to was regarding the development coverage again. We amended the resolution today to reflect a condition noting the building inspector's findings that a lot of the, the pool, the tennis court predated our development coverage regulations. So some of the, the walkways and portions of the pool terrace were also predating our development coverage regulations. So we added a whereas clause into the resolution, which indicates that the applicant, as Alan has exemplified, has reduced the amount of coverage that they felt they could reasonably reduce in order to get closer to the development coverage requirements. So with all said and done, there's still a need for the, for a variance and for them to go to the zoning board of appeals prior to signing of the site plan. And that's all included in the resolution. And then in regards to development coverage, Bob did include the same condition, not to steal your thunder, Bob, but the same condition to provide a as-built coverage calculation prior to CFO.
Right, okay. Very good. Bob, did you have any thunder one?
Yes, good evening again, Chairman. Yeah, basically just had some minor comments, like Alan said, they, they're down to 720 now for the new and previous from 2007 year date. And obviously it does not need stormwater, they're below the 1,000 square foot threshold. Just have some comments on, make it a little bit more clear on the limits of disturbance, on how much it's going to be disturbing during all of this removal, which I can't, they didn't make it that clear on the plans. And also locate the location of the existing water main and service lines that service the pool house, the accessory apartment and the residence. And also they should provide an erosion and sedimentation control plan as well. Sabrina said they're moving, reducing it by 2,030 and they have pretty lot of iterations that they're showing here that's going to be removed with the walkway, the patio, the driveway. So they should have a surveyor, a New York State licensed land surveyor, do an up-to-date survey, which shows all the areas that were removed and also update the coverage calculation worksheet stamped by the surveyor. So we know for a fact what they removed is in fact, matches what was approved on the plans as well. Which to me, that should be all required prior to the CEO of the accessory apartment. And I have no objection to all these being put in the resolution, which they have been already. And those are my comments for McGinty tonight, Chairman.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Bob. Dennis, do you have any comments? Okay. And we see that you did provide us with the elevations. I don't know, is the neighbor on? We've heard from the neighbor before and.
I forwarded them to their lawyer.
Yep, thank you. Is there anyone on?
They are on.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I don't think they have any comments.
Okay. All right. Well, now's the time to make a comment. So are any questions or comments from board members on this application? If not, and they'll.
Sorry, hang on a second. Sorry. I just want to be clear on a couple of things here. The, the adjustments you've made are adjustments that it looks to me, sounds to me like were made primarily in the interest of avoiding having to go through the SWIP process. That's essentially correct. Is that the, is that the consequence of these? I think I got that right, Bob. That's a consequence of these reductions?
Well, they're certainly under the 1,000. They're down to 720, new and previous. Whether that's their intent, I don't know. You'd have to ask them.
Well, I'm just, okay, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm suggesting that that was an intent. I mean, why wouldn't they? And it doesn't seem as though, I mean, we're still like 4,000 square feet over, something like that, the total development coverage. I understand that the, that the property was purchased that way and, unless I'm mistaken, Jennifer, that the overage was something that was sort of already there and not an overage because these improvements were done before the building, the development coverage restrictions were put in place by the town?
Yeah, a certain amount of the overage, I don't have the exact figure, but a certain amount is pre-existing legal non-conforming, meaning that there, it existed before our requirements were in place. So they're allowed to keep those, that, that coverage without the necessity of a variance. Now, anything, there's still a requirement for a variance here because it goes beyond what was pre-existing legal non-conforming. But a portion of the existing coverage that goes beyond the code requirement is legally permitted to be there.
So I understand, so we don't know how much of that?
I would defer to staff because staff reviewed the figures.
I guess the question I'm asking is, it's understood that the requirements were put in place, the stipulations or restrictions were put in place after 2007. But at the point in time that the restrictions were put in place, was the property in conformance or not? And if, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't have the information as to how much development coverage has been, what the development coverage was prior to the town's regulation on development coverage. You know, there are some changes, you know, slightly. But we didn't, we didn't have that information. But for example, the tennis court and the pool predate the town's requirement to get building permits. And, you know, we, in looking at aerials, we were able to see some of the similarities, for example, in the pool area. And the applicant appears to be taking more area off the pool patio than was there prior to the development coverage regulations. You know, but it was hard to tell from the aerial photography what paths were in existence, if there were walls in existence prior to the, the years before the development coverage regulations. So we didn't have that information.
Right. Can I, can I say one thing, Sabrina? Just for clarification purposes, that 2,007 more? Tom, I only use that because that's when the stormwater regulations came into effect. That's the number I use. That doesn't, that's not the same number that when the coverage calculation came into effect. I would imagine it came well before that, but April 14.
1990 something, I believe.
You can look it up on the code. They usually have when it's, when a local law is adopted. But that is when the local law was adopted for the stormwater regulations, April 14th, 2007. So that's the number I, I use for my stormwater calcs.
Right, but not for zoning.
That is correct.
Yeah, I, I thought 2,007 was a little bit recent. I mean, it seemed to me that the, these regulations, the zoning regulations probably put in much earlier than that. And I guess.
Absolutely.
I'm asking, I'll just go ahead and ask it. Do we have any evidence, any record of the improvements that were made after the regulations, zoning regulations were put in place? And to what they, those improvements contribute to this current overage?
We do know.
That's the question I'm asking because that's number one. Number two, there's also the purchase of the property. But, but I'm just a little bit concerned that, I mean, how much it's, none of this is grandfathered in. They have to go for a variance. In any event, zoning variance to the ZBA, I guess, in order to, to, to do what, what they want to do here. So there seems to be this gray area in terms of, you know, when these things happened and what happened. I am sympathetic to the property owner because these are things that happened before their stewardship of the property. But we, we don't know, I mean, we, I guess we don't have a record of the extent to which improvements were made illegally on the property. And I'm just concerned or questioning whether you do have that data or? I guess we don't.
We do not have that data.
Well, can we make sure that we collect and save the data that we have now as it comes along?
Yes, the resolution is written so that we can obtain exact information as to the amount of development that is occurring on this site and to memorialize it in accordance with the decision-making by this board.
So the conundrum here is that I guess there's precedent for this. I mean, I've been on the board a long time and I imagine we've done this before. But we have improvements that are made that have been made that probably were after regulations were put in place, but weren't discovered until somebody else bought the property. This happens a lot.
Yes, unfortunately, yes.
And then as a consequence of that, the regulations that are put in place for the benefit of the community, all of a sudden, we decide that out of courtesy to the current property owner, we decide to, I guess we decide to just let go and say, well, okay, it's not your fault.
We made some changes. That's, that's all we can do.
You require reductions typically.
No, I understand we're required in reductions. And that's actually the point of my question. We're still 4,000 square feet over. And so I understand the effort that's been made, the effort that's been made, it seems to me is, is prompted by a desire to avoid another step in the process, which is potentially an expensive one to go through the SWIP process, which I would do the same thing if I was, but I'm not sure that in the. Which I would do the same thing if I was, but I'm not sure that it necessarily gets to the four thousand square feet. You know, that we're over here. Uh, I don't know what to do about it. I just want to recognize that that's what's happening here.
And will that be the variance application, the four thousand feet?
Whatever.
I mean, whatever that number.
Whatever the number is.
That's what we're talking about.
Correct.
Is your next step with the ZBA.
And your your assumption is actually incorrect. The the motivation was not to avoid stormwater. In fact, Mr. McGinty told Alan to go forward and design the stormwater. And it was only because of your and other board members. Comments at the last meeting to ask us to get our pencil or better said, our eraser out. And remove some more verbiage surface that we we are down to where we are today.
Fair enough. It's inappropriate me to describe intent. I apologize for that. Uh, but nonetheless, we're, uh, we still have this conundrum that that is delivered to us not by this particular applicant, but by the conditions that we're facing here. Which occur often in town and I.
Understood your point, but I I think the board, you and the other members deserve credit for encouraging. Us and maybe other applicants to further reduce, and we did so.
And it's hard to argue against an accessory apartment.
Yeah, yeah, which is ultimately what the application was all about. And I think Eldad raised that issue uh, last time too.
I guess, uh, I guess at this point, it's up to the ZBA.
Yeah.
But what can we do going forward? To, you know, make sure that inspectors that come to the house. Are required to take a look at the uh, the information to see. You know, uh, what's changed. He can bring his own photos, you know, from up in the sky. And um, you know, then if something goes wrong. The homeowner can always talk to the inspector as to, well, why didn't you tell me all these things were added?
So that, so that doesn't really happen, um, unless there's a building permit that is pulled. This application is before you because. A building permit was requested and denied because it was, and it was determined that the accessory apartment needed the planning board approval. So it is our hope in moving forward, the way that this resolution is written, that we can get a moment in time of development coverage on this site. Um, any work that is done in relation to this accessory apartment and the removals. Um, as part of this application will be verified through not only uh, inspection, but as-built surveying and information provided to us to close out. This building permit pro uh, application. Um, moving forward, if if an applicant does something without coming to the town and there is no reason for the town to be on the property. We will not discover. Anything that's going on and it is only until the next time that a property owner comes in to do something that we can. Go back to what was approved at this point in time, recognizing there's many um. Many aspects of this property that predate. Excuse me, certain codes and regulations and that we captured in time of twenty twenty-three, what is on this property today. So this will be the benchmark moving forward.
So um. What what, yes, and we caught it as a consequence this time because the building permit needed to be pulled in order for the the applicant applicant to do what he chooses to do, which is admirable. I have no question about that. But the the real point where this maybe should be discovered. And I guess there are no mechanisms for it is that point of sale of the property. Where the property should be uh, deemed to be inconformant. Before it can be, the title can be transferred and. I know that title companies have certain requirements and other ones don't, and it depends on who's financing and how it's done and all those things. And I guess that there is no way for the town to. Uh, maybe there is a way, but it would be inappropriate for the town to insert itself in that process and say that. And you need to have a valid certificate of occupancy before you. You have a point of sale and at that point in time, these matters would be discovered and corrected uh, at that point in time. But I I guess we don't have those vehicles and I guess we're not going to have those vehicles. So I, that's why we're in the position we're in.
But I like, uh, Sabrina and and Bob, will, when we move forward on other applications. Will this now become standard that will require this uh, survey?
Yes.
Yeah, we require it. We require it more and more when there's a lot of complexities. With the coverage calculations being reduced, especially when it's close to a threshold. Such as stormwater, especially when it's close to a threshold such as almost exceeding the variance based on zoning. So we are very cognizant of that. And the building department, we do our due diligence to make certain we do um, make certain they provide that information with us. Prior to we get a CEO, when we can always use it as a benchmark.
Okay, sounds, sounds reasonable. Good, thank you. Uh, any other questions, comments? Uh, not seeing any comments from the public. Is there a motion to close the public? Oh, there is.
Yeah, there's, there are members in the public that want to uh, to speak, Chairman.
Okay. Everyone's hidden behind the map. Yes. Uh, Freedom, if you could recognize uh, one of the people?
Yes, I I, this is Walter Kerchak. Um, I actually uh. Don't have any comments, so I. Was responding to the statement that was made, um, whether anybody was on, because we say that we are on.
Okay.
Uh, that's all.
Okay. Does anyone wish to speak to the uh, application? Who's who's watching?
I'm okay.
Okay. All right, uh, not seeing any further questions or comments. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried. We have a resolution in front of us. As um. Sabrina pointed out, uh, there is a change and that change is is one that's important. It's on page two of the revised uh, uh. Resolution, and that's the one that basically says, uh, we don't have this information and it appears that um, the um. Much of the activity predates the regulations. So it's it's there for uh, grandfather. Uh, other than that, I don't think there are any other changes. We're there? Did you see it?
Well, I. I just don't know about the language. Much of it predates the regulations. Can I look at this? Just don't know how much.
Not exactly, exactly right.
Thank you.
So, uh, as amended, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried. All set? Yep. Okay, we move next uh, to our next public hearing. That's Rosansky, Tansintia Court. This is an application for a site development plan approval for construction of an in-ground swimming pool, stabilization of a gravel trail. Well, I think it's now the water gravel. Extending down beyond the clearing and grading limit line.
This has to be opened first time.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, is there a motion to open this public hearing? This is the first time we're opening this as a public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye? Jerry, you want to give us some uh?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. Um, I'm Jerry Barrett. I'm the landscape architect and site planner for the project. Um, our civil engineer is Alan Pilchow, I think, is with you this evening. And um, I think our uh, the owners Blair Khan and Greg Rosensky may be joining. I'm not sure. But we are here and uh, we're we're happy to be back and and we appreciate that the board working with us. Um, to try to move this project a long. So what we did was we came back since the last time we met with the board and we made a few, I think, I think um. Uh, significant changes to 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 change the direction of of this this project. So I'd like to go through that briefly with you. The first thing that we had done. Is we had come in and we had, uh, based on, you know, correspondence with town staff. We have adjusted the uh. We have, let me go to the site plan. We we have adjusted the the grading limit line on the project. So what we've done is. This is a project that, as you know, started out as the Brandywine subdivision, became a uh, Gorham, Nicic project. And uh, what we've done now is is there were various clearing and grading limit lines on the project. The the Brandywine clearing and green, clearing and grading limit line was the blue line. The Nicic was the green line and uh, we came in now after looking at this. And now we we're showing this this black line and based on correspondence with town staff. And we think it's logical. Now this line encompasses what's been developed on the property. So it really does show a clearing and grading limit line. It's behind the stone walls and and it contains the entire uh, property. So. Um, so so that's been made um, and and in order to um. In 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 order to uh. What we tried to do was whatever was approved for the Nicic. Plan in the area, we tried to keep it the same. So what we did was we said, well, look, in 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 our project, we want to add this pool and we want to add this trail. So we need to expand this area in red. Um, or pink, if you will. And so in order to keep the number the same, we went through and said, well, let's take the areas in yellow and we can contract. So we contracted. In that area, we expanded in that area. So we think that we've, we've maintained the original approved area in the clearing and grading limit limit line. But now I think it's more logical and it works with with the with the project. The other significant change was that, you know, we 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 talked about this, this this gravel, um. We had called it a gravel, but it's it's basically a trail. That'll come down and it'll connect the properties upper and lower areas. You know, it's a rugged site, steep terrain. And the property is characterized by the upper area and the lower area. And the the family uses the lower area all the time and they need to get back and forth and the septic is down there. So we designed this area in here. Uh, we are still proposing this um, this area. Previously, we had made it gravel, but that was really blowing out our development coverage. Um, so we we discussed that we could still go back in and um. And uh, and and install that. That area. And 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 get that in there, but it doesn't have to be gravel. It can be, it can be kind of a uh. Kind of like a, like a slope, uh, like a slope mix, a seed mix. And and that's what what we've done. We we have that in there then. So it's still the um. We were trying to get the.
That's the GeoWeb stabilization.
GeoWeb, yeah, I'm sorry, the the drawings got all out of order here and I'm trying to get back to my. So so this is that 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 GeoWeb is still going to be put on there. Um, it's still going to be done and but instead of of being a uh, a gravel surface, we're going to do it. We're going to seed it. We're going to put it, we're going to put a uh. There it is. So we're still doing the the GeoWeb. Because it's, because it's steep. It's like twenty-five percent. And so we'll we'll still do the the GeoWeb, but instead of filling it with gravel, we're going to fill it with a topsoil blend. And we're going to seed it. And so it will do the same function and it's probably not going to get a lot of use. I mean. It you, it's probably going to be mostly foot traffic, but if the family gets an ATV or whatever, they can go up and down and that would be particularly useful. For an emergency situation or perhaps if they had to do a septic repair. So. So that was the other thing. So we we took the gravel out and we were able to uh, reduce the uh. The development coverage substantially. Um, the development coverage is still slightly over. Um, what's allowed and that's principally because. That's principally because, you know, we have to take into account that. You know, the driveway, we have about two thousand square feet of driveway here that's on the property, but the property is also encumbered by about four thousand square feet. Of uh. Of of shared driveway that has to be added to the development coverage. And as a result of that, you know, so I mean, we're coming in. We're coming in from Brandon Drive. We have to come all the way up here. We have to share these things and. And a- as a result, I think that that extra four thousand square feet is um. You you know, that's that's putting us over on the development coverage. You could see here on our.
Jerry, is that, is that the action delta that put you over?
Well, yeah, it's, you know, so if you look here, our our driveway is twenty-seven hundred and seven square feet on our, on our lot. Except we have forty-seven hundred and fourteen square feet. That's, you know, it's on the common driveway. So we're over by about forty-eight square feet. So I I. Uh, we would request that the planning board give us a referral to the zoning board so we can go talk to them about a variance for this because it. You know, this is a. I I know it's only forty-eight square feet, but if you look at how tight we have everything here, I would hate to have to lose forty-eight square feet. For an amenity in the backyard that the family will enjoy for the next twenty years. I would rather go to the zoning board and talk to them and say, look, this, you know, we're over on development coverage because of development. Coverage that occurs not on our lot. Because it's a function of where the property is. I think the hardship runs with that because it's where it is and you have to have this. Shared driveway area. So I think it's a good candidate for a zoning variance and. My experience with the zoning boards is, you know, they're really concerned with, you know, if they grant the variance, will it affect the character of the neighborhood? And I don't think any, this will affect the character of the neighborhood. Uh, at all. So we would appreciate if the board would work with us and give us a referral to the zoning board so we can go ask for a forty-eight square foot or point three-three percent variance on the development coverage. That's probably.
I just, I'm sorry, Jerry, can I just interject one second on that? Um. I just want to note that the way the resolution, there's a draft resolution prepared for tonight for the planning board. Um, and the way it is drafted is to uh, provide as a condition prior to the chairman signing the site plan. That you either get that forty-eight square foot variance or otherwise revise the site plan to eliminate, we could say eliminate or otherwise reduce. Uh, the the development coverage. So um, ultimately, it's, I guess it's up to to you and the board working together as to whether or not you'd like that referral. Tonight and then come back to the planning board or conclude with the planning board and then make your way onto the zoning board. To to discuss that variance. Um, but the resolution tonight contemplates the latter procedure. So. I just wanted to interject while while you had raised that.
I I appreciate that. So so does that mean, could we just make application to the zoning board for that forty-eight square foot?
Correct.
But okay, that's, well, that's, that's what we'd like to do because, you know, I don't want to start cutting off pieces of the driveway or sidewalks. It it, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't, you know, I think in the long run. Uh, we have a good solid plan here and for the forty-eight square feet, I think it's it's worth going to the to the zoning board. So thank, thank you for that. Um. Uh, we've also uh, looked at the uh. At the mitigation plan and and I've met at the property out with with Mr. Corelli and you, we we went through Dennis's comments and. And and you and and Dennis identified this mile a minute vine that was out there and it is uh. It it's the, it's an amazing um. Uh, let's see, where is the plant? Thank you, there you go. So. When Dennis got there, Dennis identified the mile a minute vine. I met him out there. And and uh, with, you know, some of the research we had done and then speaking with Dennis and getting educated on this. It really is, it's uh, it's pervasive and. It's located in this area in red. It's located in this area in red, in this area in red, in this area in red. So. Couple of ways to try to manage that is number one is to. It 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 doesn't do well in shady sites and what uh, Dennis had recommended that perhaps we should add more shade. And we had done that. We've gone back to the erosion to 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 our planting plan. Um, and we've added about nine, we 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 we've switched out. Understory trees for uh, shade trees. So we've added about nineteen shade trees now to the plant, so that'll help that. And then as far as the invasive, uh, you know, what what we found out is after the, after we researched this, that. The plant is actually an an annual that actually um, receives itself by with with seeds. And so some of the management techniques would be to. Uh, to put down a pre-emergent type thing, you know, people put down pre-emergent crab gas control. It's the same thing. And that can be done in February or March and that prevents a lot of this from coming back. Um, the other management tool that's working out there right now is mowing. And it's, it's so. And it's it's so clear that where this is mowed over the septic and it's coming in here, it just stops. It's like a clean line and it's the same thing here and it's the same thing here. So mowing and weed eating works. Pulling the stuff out is really not going to work, it's such a big, big area that that it covers. So if you can, if you can work with the pre-emergent and put that down to limit how much comes back. And then when the post-emergent, when the when the stuff comes out, then you you can treat it with a a a gly, I think it's like a like a round, a roundup type herbicide. And that can be done. And so we've proposed that that we would try to manage this using using the pre-emergent, using the mowing and then using the the herbicide to try to manage it. And the owners are totally on board with this, they're going to be talking to their neighbors because, you know, it's here, it's not only here, it's here and it's here too. We think we can keep it at bay here because we have the mowing. But, you know, we're going to have to be careful here and here. But once we we get on to that, so so that that was another thing we we did. And we appreciate Mr. Corelli bringing that to our attention. And the other thing is Alan Pilch has been working on some of the stormwater with the town engineer. And I will let Alan then take over and talk a little bit about how he's going to be going, working on that.
So with the Stormwater Management Plan. With the Stormwater Management Plan, his design is around two thousand, just over two thousand square feet of impervious surfaces as a result of the redevelopment, destruction of the pool and pool patio. We're picking up the driveway, just about twenty seven hundred square feet into a slot drain located here. And originally, we had a Stormwater Management Practice located behind the wall, which is really not one of my favorite locations to do it. Because there's always a possibility that, you know, infiltration into the ground will impact it. So what we ended up doing is taking a look at this area here, the drainage ditch is located to the west. But we looked at this area here in the lower portion of the property. And we did a deep ball test and percolation test. And both came up very favorably. The deep ball test at that location, and it was observed by Terry Rowe, who's out there, didn't see him. It was six feet, six inches deep before we had any, you know, say weathered bedrock in that location. And the percolation test we ran had a rate of eight and a half inches an hour. So we actually have very good soils in this location. So we've actually relocated the Stormwater Management Practice to this portion of the site. So again, a lot of the trench drain, which picks up the runoff from the driveway, just as before. And instead of treating it in this location, we'll pre-treat it in the front yard, go through the wall basically and into chambers located here. This is actually the perp test is there and the deep ball test was there. And we'll discharge into the ditch. So that's essentially what we've done to modify the plan. And it just seems like a much better location in which to do it. Obviously, I will amend the Stormwater Report presented to the town engineer and the town. But all these items will still have to be done to do that, but all the calculations have been done in support for it. And as I say, the deep ball tests, percolation tests were all observed by the town, it was all witnessed. So that's the amended Stormwater Management Plan. And it avoids the issue of putting a Stormwater Management Practice behind the wall. And the other locations on the property are just not suitable because either it puts it, it's either too steep. You know, it's kept it more than fifty percent slope and hour cords above the septic system, which is just an absolute no-no, that's all there is to it. It's not permitted, period. So that's why it ended up there.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay. Sabrina, do you have any comments?
Not at this time. My comments have been incorporated into the resolution, very similar to the other two applications regarding the the development coverage overage and the submission of an as-built prior to C O V dictating what that that coverage has been complied with.
Okay. Bob, did you have some comments?
Basically, minor stormwater comments, Alan will address, he briefly discussed. I just want to do mention, there's about a hundred and sixty foot retarding wall here, some reinforced concrete, some boulder. Obviously, those have to be prepared, signed and stamped and sealed by a New York State License P E with the notes that have to go along with it, that's G C two. Also, too, with all due respect to landscape architects, the GeoWeb system to me is considered a structural component. So that's has to have a stamp by a P E on that, that's G C three as well. And I have some minor comments on detail set selection that they show for the three D slope protection, which, by the way, Chairman, we use this on several others, on several other subdivisions. Random farms many, many years ago for an emergency access for fire trucks, still going well. We used it at another North Fork subdivision out there by Roanoke Road. And we used another one on Surf Lane, they all worked out well, they're they're great. They don't count towards imperviousness, they're they're excellent. So I'm sure it will work out well too as well and a good for steep sloped areas too as well, this is twenty five percent. Rest of mine are just based, excuse me?
To confirm, Bob, it doesn't count toward coverage.
That is correct, that's the beauty of it. That's the beauty of it. Matter of fact, Ari used it out there in Sunshine Children's Home as well. So this is like the fifth or sixth application that works out fine. Rest just basically standard notes. And again, I have no objection to these being incorporated into the resolutions, which they have already been done. And that ends my comments for.
Okay.
Rosansky.
Yep, Dennis, did you have any additional comments?
No, Jerry incorporated everything prior and, you know, got a nice plan together as far as, you know, invasive species management and approach. So I was appreciative of that.
I think I saw something in some of the documents about the, just point of interest. But the same sort of procedures could work against stonemass as well, Japanese stonemass?
Yeah, some of those herbicides have multiple applications. So but but on on this site, there is a stonemass component, but the mile a minute is definitely more more insurmountable rated there.
And whatever you saw a week or two ago is already doubled.
Right, it's probably started to produce those nice berries.
Okay, good. Any comments from board members?
No.
No, other than just like, sorry. Just as usual, I think Jerry does an excellent job of presenting the material in a special way. Makes it clear what's being asked for and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have a hand raised, any members of the public out there?
No hands are raised.
Okay. Without any further comments from board members, I'm not seeing any hands raised from the public. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motioned.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
So we're all set. We have a resolution before us. And again, you know, we tried to accelerate this. I just want to caution the applicant that there's a lot of material still has to be done here. We've conditioned it so that you can get going on it. But, you know, the permits don't don't get granted without complying with these these conditions. So I know this is a a big leap and you have the Z B A now for the forty eight square feet. But just again, as a reminder, there's a lot of work here to be done. Some is easy, some is straight up, but we don't normally have this many conditions. So we wanted to get you guys through the process. So any questions or comments on the resolution that's before us? I don't think we have changes on this one, did we? So not seeing any, is there a motion to approve the resolution as drafted?
Hello?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Great, we're all set? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the planning board and Mr. Chair Chairman. We're going to get right on this and we hope to get everything back to you guys as soon as we can so we can move it along.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't give it to us. We're done. But if you want a note from us on the forty eight square feet for the referral for the zoning board, we're happy to send a note.
I'll follow up with Sabrina offline to find out the best way to do it.
Okay, I mean, normally, please, you draft these things for us and, you know. Not on charge.
Thank you.
Very good. That was a joke. Okay, we're all set. Next one is, we have a resolution here on Gulata. This is fifteen Surf Lane, application for a final subdivision plot approval, applications for a site development plan approval to mitigate the infringement of an existing sports court, and all that exists or worked, and the clearing and grading limit lines.
Good evening, this is Kascara and C V I landscape designer for Mr. and Mrs. Gulata. Just to provide a little bit more fresh air because Alan has been taking a lot of space here.
You spoke to us in Poland last night, right?
That's, that was me and now I'm back here.
Okay.
We have reviewed the resolution draft, discussed it with the clients, and we're interested in continuing and completing as discussed. So that's pretty much where we're standing, we're very thankful that we're coming to some sort of agreement.
Okay. Great. I think we did have some comments and staff on this, so why don't we take those comments? Are you seeing some demos? So Sabrina, you have some comments?
Yes, just a couple. Just to say that the applicant, as previously discussed, will be removing the sport court, the low wall and the shed. They have submitted cover a coverage figure depicting coverages on the site. In accordance with that figure, the the building coverage is within the limits. But again, we have an exceedance of the development coverage of three thousand six hundred and twenty eight square feet. Now, the there's a great coverage figure that has been included. But what we will need prior to the signing of a site plan is a revised coverage calculations worksheet so that we can follow through and do an as-built compared to that coverage calculation worksheet. It reflects the coverage calculations figure that was submitted. And then, other than that, I have no further comments.
Okay, thank you, Sabrina.
Sure.
Bob, you have some comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, basically. I met out there with their structural engineer to go over what has to be done with the walls. They have to certify to the walls, they're going to do some work in front of the walls to make sure they have the proper depth. So I met with Mr. McCry, see how that goes, he's going to submit a draft to me, I'll review it. Let him know what else has to be done out there regarding the walls that have to be certified. I did notice one thing, though. That the mitigation for clearing and grading limit line over development map report that was done by the landscaper. She has these beautiful maps in this drawing, but they're very tiny, they're very small. I did put it in my comments, it's item number six that I'd hope they will see if they don't understand that they can always discuss it with me. But they should really be full-size maps so we can put them into the plans that are signed by the chairman. Because it's in my mind, not a good idea to have the plans signed by the chairman and then a report that we have to look for. But it's just very difficult to read the small maps. So I would highly recommend you make them architectural D-size, twenty four by thirty six and put a date who prepared them. I'd recommend if they get stamped that they can. That was one of the bigger items I had with the mapping, just to try to make it a little bit more concise and keep it more coordinated with all the plans we have to look at and stamp and sign that the chairman has to sign. And also, too, we're going to need, I believe, a new clearing and grading limit line as a declaration, that's number five. And the rest are just minor comments, one, two and three. And seven is basically notes. And obviously, I have no objection to all these being put into the resolution, which they have been done so far, Chairman. And that ends my comments for this application.
Okay, thank you. Any issues with any of those?
No, absolutely not, we would definitely prepare them in large size for the documentation. I am, I am, however, a landscape designer, and that brings me to another question, I am, that's my second career. And one of the points in your resolution, number eighteen, has a terms for receiving C O V on the house. So that would be towards the last page. Says that at the sole cost of the expense of an applicant, the actual construction installation and implementation of tree straps and ground cover should be certified by a licensed registered landscape architect as following the approved plans and conditions to secure approval and fully implemented final proof mitigation plan. So this requires third party, not me, because I'm a landscape designer, so I'm not certified to do that. However, that's kind of part of my services provided. So the question is, is the certified landscape involvement necessary or could that be still be me?
Jennifer or Bob, do you have some comments on that? I don't know what our standard practice is on that.
Well.
This is our standard practice, but wanted to hear more.
Jen, you mind if I go first, you there?
Yeah, no, absolutely, go ahead.
I mean, in my experience with all these resolutions over the past, I don't know, seventeen years since I have been going to the planning board. Anytime we have as-built, anytime we have plantings, we always, always have it certified by a licensed professional. It just makes it more, a little bit more legit. I'm not taking anything away from the designer, but every resolution I've ever seen always has that, especially when it comes to the as-built certification. It's always been done by R L A.
That's, Bob, you took the words right out of my mouth, except I don't have seventeen years' experience, just nine with the planning board. So just a few, few less years.
You're very slippery, you got past a lot of them, I I.
Yeah, so I think I think the answer is our recommendation is that it stay on as as drafted.
I agree. What, Jen?
Okay. So I guess you'll just need to get someone to help out on that one, the one aspect. I think Dennis, you had some comments?
Yes. In essence, I'll start with, I have no issues with making these a condition of resolution because if you can, I wrote the resolution first and then developed the memo second. It's more of like a roadmap going from conceptual to now design in terms of the planting. So to start, you know, a lot of my bullets with the site development plan comments has to do with, okay, now that we know what we're planting in these restoration areas, we need to, you know, sort of have a layout plan to show the locations of where they're going to be planted. What are the planting sizes? You know, to be care, procure for the nursery, you know, what what the seed mixes would be and then the type and application rate. You know, if applicable, those mixes are going to be applied. We want to see locations and some details on the herbivory protection methods to be used. I wanted to add that note with respect to that we were speaking of field locations to put or spot locations for potential canopy trees, especially at the southern limits of restoration areas two and three. And I would, you know, review that, you know, prior to initiating any of the planting activities. Those deciduous trees, if applicable, like I said, would be spot located in the field. So it's be better than, you know, obviously on the plan, it's difficult to to determine the the exact spot. I wanted to add a note regarding just the invasive species removal that, you know, for best practices, we really shouldn't include that. You know, as part of the bag pickup for the town of Newcastle, that, you know, they really should be disposed of technically. Otherwise, it, you know, perpetuates the the problem with respect to any composting the town would do. Another note added, not really knowing at this moment exactly how all the work would be executed. I just wanted to provide some sort of amelioration or best manager practices to any impacts. Because I know there's, you know, concerns with respect to moving past the developed footprint into that woodland proper. So if there, you know, needs to be anything other than, you know, workers, hand tools and wheelbarrows, things like that, if there needs to be, you know, any any type of machinery or small equipment that, you know, we do what we need to do to sort of protect. equipment, um, that, you know, we, we do what we need to do to sort of protect areas, uh, you know, not just the, the soils and the woodland floor, you know, from, from protection, but, you know, as well as trying to come up with a, just a preferred access e-dress route, you know, just so that, you know, we're avoiding, you know, potentially trees. There's open areas maybe already laid out that, you know, could, could provide that. Again, that's only if, if that type of stuff is required. I believe Bob mentioned, um, some of what was required for, uh, number two with respect to the full-size drawing and then, you know, uh, some of these items that we would want, um, included on those plans. And all the maps shall reference this report in each of the respective pages as well that, um, Casca has prepared. And we need to see what the limits of disturbance are in the square feet and acres. Prior to the building, uh, permit being issued. So we have to see on-site exactly where is the amended clearing and grading limit line? You know, where are the hundred-foot, uh, wetlands boundary buffer lines? So those will need to be staked out and enumerated and flagged or somehow demarcated separately in the field, just so that we know zones that A are gonna be, you know, designated for some of the restoration work and B, obviously, what would need to be avoided, you know, actually in, in real-time slash on-site. And at that time, uh, we could have, you know, the temporary fencing that would give a demarcation of areas so that, you know, it would make something more obvious to workers that, you know, obviously coming up with an area to avoid or an exclusion zone. Uh, and then, um, under C, what was, uh, you know, recommended for prior to COGO. These, uh, items obviously appear on all the resolutions when it comes to the, uh, the planting. You know, wanting, uh, which was just discussed, uh, the certification of the plantings, the maintenance and monitoring plan, uh, for five years regarding, um, as it says, maintenance and monitoring of those plantings, potential for replacements, uh, a cost estimate for, uh, the installation. That would be reviewed by myself in turn of the year. And then based on, um, that approved estimate, the, uh, five-year maintenance guarantee in the form acceptable to town council approved by the town board, uh, at thirty-five percent for the total cost of the plantings to sort of serve as a, uh, a fund going forward, should there, you know, need to be additional work, replacement, additional plantings, et cetera. And as I said, all these are listed in the, uh, resolution, and I have no objection to putting them there verbatim.
Okay. Well, this is a point of interest. Will this be, uh, with the changes that we're looking at, will these be, uh, survey, uh, confirmed?
Yes, there's, you know, it, it's a fair amount of work. I mean, it's, uh, it's part of the resolution, but it's, it's, it's not a rubber stamp, that's for sure.
Right, right, okay, very good. Okay, comments from the applicant? Any comments from board members on this, uh, application?
Yeah, I guess I apologize. I need to be, um, grow up to speed. If I could get some help here. I've lost track of the justification for the, uh, development coverage of our overage of, it's like it's in the neighborhood of about thirty-six hundred square feet. Ken, uh, Sabrina, perhaps you can help me?
Sure. Um, this was, uh, again, a situation where you have new property owners, um, coming into, who, who came in to build, um, an additional impervious surface, putting in an outdoor kitchen or a barbecue, extensive barbecue area, um, and it was discovered that they were over development coverage that was cut by a previous property owner. And that, that's kind of where we sit with this.
So the, uh, the overage on the development coverage is pretty substantial?
Yes.
And, um, I mean, three thousand thirty-five, whatever it is, thirty-five hundred square feet, I guess, more or less. That's a lot, that's a lot of coverage. Where is it? Is it, is it in the house? Is it in the driveway? I mean, there are certain improvements here that are fundamental, just to develop the property and put a house there. Uh, and then other ones that are incidental to that, like patios and walkways and amenity features that, uh, one would normally want to put on their properties would be understandable. But is this, is this again, a situation where the overage is because this building was done before?
No.
And the restrictions, no?
We have restrictions on this.
So where did the, if one were to take the house in the driveway, for example, and add all that up, would that be over the ten thousand square foot maximum? Or, I mean, where, where's the F three thousand square feet? In the, in the, in the drawing? What accounts for that in the coverage?
There were additional walls and patios added. There were extensions to the driveway. There was a small sports court added. Based on our agreement, we are removing some of them to lower the acreage, uh, coverage. Uh, and we are also reducing, we're actually changing the clearing and grading limit line to address some of the obstructions and encroachments. And then for the remaining three thousand plus, we are suggesting the, the mitigation with plantings.
So, for example, the squi- the, the sport court was about eight hundred square feet, I believe.
It says five thirty, yeah.
Right, so that's being, being removed, and I recall that, as I recall. Yeah, it was a shed, but I think the driveway was a, a significant component, contributor to the, the excess. I think they widened the driveway.
There was a backup space behind the garage, um, through the right side, to the east side of the garage.
Yes.
That was an extra space. That, that was part of the overage. And then there's the walkway and the patio in the lower portion of the property. That too was part of the excess. So that was the additions that resulted in the overage.
Right.
What the principle was.
Right, exactly. I guess if there's smaller ones, now you get these walls.
A shed forty-nine square feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I guess I'm, I'm just, I don't think we're gonna approve this tonight. I, I would recommend we not approve this tonight, because I think Dennis is right. This is not, we're not in a, you know, I don't think that we're in a place with respect to the issues he's raised in terms of occupation and so on, that we ought to be approving a resolution based on those things being taken care of. I think we're gonna need, I would recommend we do another go-around on this, to be sure those things are taken care of. But, um, I, I still, I guess I'm not really comfortable with this overage. I mean, I understand you've taken some out, but there's still three thousand square feet, thirty-five hundred square feet that you're over. And that mitigation in landscaping and planting is sufficient for that amount of square footage?
Well, we actually doubled the amount of mitigation, just because we anticipated that that will be the argument raised by the board, that plans do not equal coverage. So the base on them, in our mitigation plan includes removal of invasives and then playing, planting native plants that are actually, I mean, the double of the coverage for what we are doing with the impermeable surfaces. So we're treating twice as much as we are having in impermeable surfaces.
But that, unless I'm mistaken, we could require that anyway. I mean, we could be mistaken about that, but we could require that.
Well, this is.
That's not necessarily, uh, necessary condition of our approval.
No, but that's, that's, that is our proposition.
Understood, understood.
So this is a new sale as well, a new.
Yes, yes, it is, yes, it is.
So it was done by the previous owner.
Correct, uh, yeah, because this is, you know, relatively recent, recently constructed. I'm confused by the numbers. After the mitigation, are we still thirty-five or thirty-six hundred over? Or is that where we started before you gave back some?
So we were, we were forty-two hundred, right? Forty-two hundred, and then we removed it and we are coming to thirty-four. I might be off a little bit on this one, but.
But basically, Tom is correct. We're, we're at thirty-four after the, uh, after the changes, okay?
Yeah, about thirty-five.
I got it, I got it, okay.
Thirty-six, actually.
I, I was confused. Well, I, uh, I, I don't know, I, I, I think Dennis was comfortable, and I don't want to speak to Dennis, Dennis can speak for himself. Uh, I think Dennis and Bob were okay with what they've put through in terms of conditions. But we may not be comfortable with thirty-five hundred square feet still, uh, in, in, in the overage or coverage. And it's very interesting, because again, you know, again, you have sympathy for a new owner inside of it. And one wonders what the, uh, what, what ability they have to go back into prior seller. But, you know, we talked, we had one of these earlier tonight, and there was, you know, things pulled up. And again, uh, at the end of the day, we still have this quite wide, uh, driveway. You know, where there's extra turnaround in here.
Well, I think that the big player in this discussion is actually how this location plays out. It's an extremely steep location, so making this driveway narrow will become a little bit difficult to maneuver in the winter months, for example.
Wasn't there enough room? Bob, maybe you can help us with the turning radius? Isn't there enough room in the driveway as, as it was originally designed?
That is, that is correct. That was built in two thousand and seven, and keep in mind, that additional area was built as a basketball court many years ago, but when they first originally designed the house, that driveway was much smaller. It did not have that hammerhead going out to the east. So to your point, Bob, yes, they probably were sufficient with the turning radiuses back then, when it was originally built. And that was a pretty big expansive area to build for that addition, and that's where the new retaining wall was put in as well.
Is that, uh, hammerhead parking spot, has that been leveled as well? I mean, has that all been disturbed when they, uh, put that in?
Yeah, I would imagine so. Because if you look at the two maps, the old maps, that hammerhead was not in. Again, that was originally put in as a, uh, like a half basketball court, then they turned it into parking spots.
Yeah, yeah, and, and you can see their, their retaining walls there as well.
Yeah, so when it was a, when it was a basketball court, they certainly didn't need it for the turning movements, because they were keeping the turning movements within the basketball boundary, so.
Yeah, I was, uh, both Bob's, I was looking at that area also. It looks like that pole area in front of the garage is really excessive with respect to what's actually needed, and the driveway looks, um, wide also. I mean, I just think that we're not, maybe not pushing hard enough on some of this stuff on this particular site. Some of these things could be, I understand the reluctance to do it, but, um, I'm not sure that our request to do it diminishes in any substantial way, the, um, you know, the functionality of, of the hammerhead and in this location and the driveway in this location. So I wonder, oh, and my comment about, about Dennis's comments was that, you, that Dennis wasn't comfortable with where it was going. I thought it was more that the documentation was not yet in place enough for us, maybe you weren't saying this.
Into the resolution.
But I, excuse me, I, excuse me. That, that we weren't necessarily ready to, um, that maybe weren't ready to put it in the resolution, because there was a lot of documentation that wasn't ready yet. Am I wrong about that? That's fine if I'm wrong about that.
So the language of the resolution was attempting to go from, I guess what we have now is conceptual to, you know, kind of what's required for design and implementation. And that's what we don't have at this time, like a plan that, you know, would show all of that. So the resolution at this point, um, it's more of a roadmap thing to how to get there. But no, the, the board's not gonna get an opportunity to, to see that, obviously. It would just be me when it makes it to that point, assuming if you accepted the resolution.
That's my concern.
Okay.
Which I'm not sure what experience you have doing that, so, yeah.
Dick, did you have any thoughts on this?
Well, it's the same kind of thought I had before. Here's another case, two in a row. Maybe there's, uh, not, not many more. We don't, I don't really feel the justification for doing this is, um, other than being kind to neighbors. In, uh, you know, ten years ago, we would, we would try and find something that was really special about why they should be able to retain this now, or have this, I should say. Now, this is, these are retention issues where the prior owner was the one who was, uh, not paying any attention, um, to the, to the outcome of this new stuff that was being built. Uh, so I don't see where the special stuff is, uh, but, uh, I can't blame the homeowner with the way, the way it's set up, and I can't blame them entirely. Um, they're trying. And that comes back to, we need to have some process that's in the code that says that, well, if you're buying a house here, then you have to make sure that, that, um, the original approval hasn't been torn asunder or ripped off a little bit, uh, to help some out of, uh, you know, out of the world kind of difference, that did, uh, different things that are then now built. So I, I, I think we're deficient in that, unless someone can convince me that, you know, that there's a requirement to go and do the check. I mean, there's aerial photographs, it's not that hard to see where there are significant differences over the course of twenty years or whatever. Other than that, it's fine.
Maybe I would have adds actually historical information. One, the presentation that you have bounded over there, um, on page six actually shows how the calculations and coverage has been changing over the years. And one of the large elements that we have discussed is not only the size of the lot, but also due to the changes in the size of the house. In two thousand and three, there was an amendment into, into the existing coverage. And even though it is, it has been larger previously, it kind of diminished. And, uh, we are carrying that till today. And so, yeah, here, Alan, so.
I, I think what it reflects was that there was a certain, uh, permitted building and development coverage from the SURF subdivision approval, but what was proposed initially, uh, was less than that, and that's, um.
Less than what was permitted.
Less than what was permitted, correct. And I think that was the, or, the part of the origin of that discrepancy, if you will, of having a, uh, I'll say a reduced, uh, development coverage. I, I will say with regard to certain features on this property like that, you know, that backup space, because of the steepness of this property, um, and the length of the driveway, I will say it's very convenient for a visitor to this property to have that space. Without it, it is, it is just awkward. It really is. And we're not talking a large area here. I understand that it's an overage. I get that. But, you know, they, that, that backup space was like seven hundred square feet or seven hundred eighty square feet. It's not a lot of space, but it's so convenient with regard to the functionality of this lot, just because of the steepness of the driveway and the, the, the way this whole property is set up. I just think it's something that should be at least considered. It's part of the discussion.
About the steepness of the driveway, you're suggesting that, because the, the area by the garage is gonna be flat.
It is.
So you're talking about steepness of the driveway, which makes it difficult for a visitor to park on the driveway.
It's, it's too narrow.
So that, uh, you need the space near the garage, uh, which is a flat space for have, for visitor parking.
It, it is much more convenient that way. That's a term.
Well, there's another issue also on that is, you know, any kind of remediation of that area might actually do more short-term damage in terms of what we're doing with the hill and restoration than what's, what's even being proposed here.
You mean the driveway?
Yeah, that, that turnout, yeah.
The turnout's flat.
Yeah, yeah, but if we.
Behind a turnout, there's a significant drop, so.
Yeah, exactly. So if we said, look, we want to restore, take out the walls.
I didn't say that.
Okay. So if we kept the walls and just kept the, the asphalt out.
Take the asphalt out, that would be, that would be what you would do, if that's what we want to do. That's what I would be proposing. I'm not proposing that yet.
To regrade it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, the, uh, the property owner, the applicant, has her hand raised online.
Okay, very good.
Hi, may I speak?
Please, yep.
Yes, hi, my name is Megan Gulata. Um, my husband and I obviously are the homeowners. Thank you very much for working with us on this project. I'm happy to be here tonight. I'm sorry you can't see my face. I'm on a college visit in Maine with my oldest. Uh, I just wanted to point out a few things. Um, uh, first of all, I, I, I need, it's very important to hear my, they, our history as, as new homeowners, um, and. And because I do believe that we are a special case. We're no strangers to the zoning board and this is planning board, but no stranger to the zoning board. When we went to sell our Chappaqua home to buy this Mount Pisco home, town of Newcastle, the home we lived in for eight years previously. Excuse me. It, it came up upon when we, when we went to sell our house that an entire extension of that home that we had lived in for eight years was illegal due to zoning. And we had no idea. And we had lived in it for eight years. And it was, it was built by the people that owned it even before us. So before we could sell that Chappaqua house, it took six months to have it drawn up, to have it legalized, to go through zoning, to have it get letters from my neighbor who could verify had been there for seventeen years to get it approved. It delayed the sale of my house. It greatly increased stress. And I'm telling this story only because obviously when we moved in to buy this house, I asked if the patio was legal. I asked if all permits that were open, if they could be closed. And the town did visit to close permits that were open. We did our due diligence. And we are, I don't know if there's a, if there's quite a word to describe how upset we are that we're right back in the same position times a lot more money. We're trying to do everything we can. We have four kids. We'll remove that sports court out front. We know it impedes that grading and clarity limit line. Happy to do it. Another reason we bought the house is because it's special. It's in a beautiful conservation development. There's the Mount Pisco River far, far in the back, not on my property far away. But if you listen to it on a very quiet day, you can hear it. Okay? It is beautiful. We want to keep it beautiful. We don't want to bring in backhoes and rip up other things that were put there that we thought were legal and we asked about when we bought the house. We're trying to make, just, just, just take care of it. And we are doing everything that we can. And we really want to continue working with everybody. And I know that we can find a resolution. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe I'll add into this. I mean, the moment I actually entered the Mr. and Mrs. Galata's house, that was a year ago, just after they purchased the house, and we had started working on this outdoor kitchen, which initiated this entire process. We were talking about adding eighty square feet of outdoor kitchen. And that kind of blew out into very large process that is now going for over a year. In, in this entire process, I don't want to, do you just, you have this impression that we're just asking to plan some plans to cover up for our over coverage. We have, the homeowners have gone through substantial process. We had extended septic system. We have had engineers visiting the side. We have Alan working with us. We are just trying, we have worked with the extension of the water coverage and colding system for
There's a stormwater management plan was developed.
So we, we are, we are proposing to remove the spaces from the property. We are very transparent about this. And we are, I mean, obviously, we would prefer not to be removing anymore for, but what homeowners just purchased and that they were excited about. And that's why the plan for the mitigation with the plantings. Something to take into account, and I'm not sure if, if this is very fresh in your memory, is that this is also wetland property. So very, very large property, over three acres. And, and the house and those over coverages are actually very small percentage of the entire property. So the clearing grading limit line takes a very large percentage of the property. Then wetlands and wetland buffer takes very large of the property, which is completely untouched. And nothing happens because homeowners actually enjoy that kind of preserve situation. So all the structures are very close to the house and, and will remain this way. There is no ambition anymore going forward to, to be adding. My two cents on this is given that we looked at three different similar situations today, I feel like this is not them trying to add ten thousand square feet in, in the house, right? And I just think, given what the owner just described, unless we have a very, very specific ask of them of how to reduce that three thousand square feet, I would say if we have a resolution, if we want to see them come back and show us some of that, that's a whole different conversation. But I don't, I don't see the point of sort of dragging this forward.
So if I could, it's all very helpful. And I, with respect to the overage, I think that the homeowner forgive me, the homeowner makes an excellent point about doing their, their due diligence to be sure that things are, they're not going to suffer through what they suffered through once before. And I don't, there's no intent here to make anybody suffer through this process, although it may seem, seem that way. I think there's been a pretty good case made about the driveway itself and the, the area next to the garage. I think you've all made a pretty good case that perhaps you've done what is reasonable to do here. So I guess I'm okay with the, with the overage. I still am a little bit concerned about the documentation that, that is in this, is being stipulated in the draft resolution that we are going to require be completed before. I guess, I guess the language says before a CFO was issued, maybe it's a CFO is the, is the checkpoint for all of that. If Dennis is comfortable with that, and I think that Dennis is going to be, unless I'm mistaken, Dennis is going to be the one to, to look at those drawings and certify that they are adequate to those needs, then I guess I'm okay with that as well.
Okay, Dick? Are you, your thoughts on this, Nick? Are you okay with it? Given the circumstances that we, we've heard about this and, and what their representatives have also told us, some of the historical background? Okay. So I, I, I agree. I, 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 I think they've done what they can do. And we've heard before about their attempt to do their due diligence and to avoid this exact situation. It does, again, make us, it makes me go back and kind of scratch my head and say, how can this be? This is, this is not right to be happening to, to new homeowners coming into town, in this case, coming across town. But it, we, we really need to think about this. I, I have some ideas in terms of how to deal with contractors, which I'll try to write up for the town board. But in any event, I, I think some of the things that we're looking at that we could consider, I'm not so sure. It wouldn't do anything more than just play arithmetic. And so I think materially, you, you've done what you can do. And I agree. I mean, you are constrained by wetlands very significantly. This was a very tough site when we first looked at it. So I'm okay with it as, as we've now arrived at. So unless there's any other comment, I guess we, unless anyone has another question, I don't know, we can.
I have a comment.
Okay, good, good.
I'm just, as thinking through this, that, you know, that there are aerial photographs made regularly. They, they don't go back, but not what, ten years or twelve years. But that might be a help too. Particularly if there were a way, I don't think, I don't know if this exists. If there were a way that when the, the, you know, the photographs from the sky are made, do the photographs find something different? You know, one year or five years or something like that, which then could be brought to the attention, you know, of our staff and, you know, see what, what's going on. But I said, it's just the, the beginning of a thought.
Yeah.
The, the other thing, just based on what the homeowner said, they went through something while they were selling the property. So clearly, it's not consistent either way. When you're selling or buying, you know, they just happen to be in the same community and are looking at it on both sides of it, which is very unfortunate for them. And so, you know, yeah, certainly we have to have something that's consistent across the board. Well, I agree. I will add something because I'm working very often with the homeowners on their properties, advising them on different projects. I think many issues that are so familiar to the board, such as coverage or stormwater management, are completely out of any consideration for the homeowner, wetlands. Nobody really knows to check for those elements on the property when they're purchasing. So they're relying on advisors that they have lawyers titles. They are really relying on the town when they come in, if that's already an accept, that the town tells them that everything is closed. I understand the processes in the town, that the town will say that all of the building permits are closed and the house is a CFO. And then those pictures, the satellite pictures come in. I mean, this is, this is a lot to ask for the homeowner. And I think the ones who know and repetitively break it are the contractors.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we are constantly in a situation where the contractor is willing to, to actually proceed with our department, right? And the more, the more paperwork you're requiring, the more surveys, the more calculate, coverage calculation, the more it adds to the cost, the less likely the project will take place, the more likely that the contractor will try to steer the client away from it.
Oh, that's very well said. And I think that Bob's notion of finding a way, finding a way to get, I think that message to the town board is, is in support of that. And I, I agree completely.
So the homeowners have to know, like, they have to know above and beyond the contractors. Oh, you're right. I mean, I remember we just bought, you know, we just got surveys and, like, I don't think we were asked to do anything else. And they're all in the process of trying to close the deal. Like, that's what it's about.
Yes.
So.
Yep.
It, it's a complicated issue because there's, there's a lot of components. And there's a lot, a lot of people pressing the move forward. And then it's left to the engineers to be sticky workers.
There is the point of sale in every point that there is a sale on a piece of property that things be, should be in conformance before the sale goes through. And this was one of the, the conundrums that your clients faced on the sale. There's also the process of during the ownership of the property that what's being done there is done legally. So you don't get the point of sale. And all of a sudden, you've got this, this huge problem. And that gets to, I think licensing contractors, landscaping contractors, everybody, and making sure that things are done accordingly. And, you know, I, I don't know how that enforcement works, but I agree with that.
Well, it has to be done, I think, in a manner that becomes somewhat self-enforcing. Where the contractor's got skin in the game, but I think others have, need to be, have skin in the game too. I've, I've talked to some, some length on this with Bob Seoli. We've, we've rolled around on this one because it's one of those things that drives me nuts because the other issue is the Sunday contractors. You know, when staff is not around, town hall's closed, and all of a sudden you hear bulldozers down on your street because it's the Sunday morning attack. And trees are felled. You know, there's a new road built.
That road too?
Oh, yeah. And, and, you know, they have days off and we don't have the ability to send people out and forcing or, I don't think we want drones up in the air around the clock. Although it might be cheaper. Anyway, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyway, are any other comments on, on this application? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing? This is just a resolution, right?
Yeah, public hearing was closed last month when you directed resolution.
Right, right. So we have a resolution before us. There's that one amendment. I think it's line twenty-one or paragraph twenty-one. Right. So we just have a preamble in that sentence. There's nothing material. And other than that, I think that's the only change. So is there a motion to approve the resolution as amended? Second?
Second. Aye.
Aye? Okay. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we now have Newcastle Fire District number one, four ninety-one, four ninety-five. This is a request for an amendment to the resolution. The fire district is coming to us for a change in the order of one of the conditions.
Good evening, everyone. Lynn Whining with Windells, Marx Lane and Mittendorf, Special Counsel to the Newcastle Fire District, number one. And as you know, the splitting board approved the expansion of the fire station pursuant to a resolution. That resolution has a condition in it that requires the issuance of a New York State DOT work permit for all improvements prior to obtaining a building permit. And tonight we're requesting that this condition, which is condition number thirty-three, be modified so that the DOT work permit can be a condition to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and not the building permit. The biggest hurdle to obtaining the DOT permit is the timing for the DOT to approve the construction of the sidewalk, which is one of the conditions of the resolution. The sidewalk construction involves the donation of an easement to the DOT, which can take quite some time due to the various processes that the DOT has. So in terms of, of timing, the district intends to go out to bid in January twenty twenty-four for the project. And if everything goes as planned, they anticipate a shovel in the ground in the spring of twenty twenty-four. The concern is that the DOT, due to these timing issues, might not issue their permit in time for a building permit to be issued for the project. So the work on the DOT permit, including the sidewalk construction, started last spring, or I think August twenty twenty-four. And I'm going to hand it over to Joe Montefari, the, the district's planner with JMC, who can detail the work and the status of, of the permit at this point. Joe?
Thank you. Thank you, Lynn. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Just share my screen quick so I can show you plan that was submitted. So as Lynn stated, you know, the, the condition is for a building permit for the Fire District to obtain a permit from the DOT. And we are having some, it, it is delayed somewhat. And we have been working on that. So this plan here shows the, the right-of-way side of this red line that is drawn on this plan shows the extent of the DOT work that would need to be done under the permits. So we would agree not to do any work in that area other than our construction entrance in order to get onto the site. You know, until that permit is issued. As Lynn stated, August of twenty twenty-two initiated the, the dedication process with the take-line meeting. Our team submitted some documents in September of twenty twenty-two, based on the discussions of that take-line meeting. We did not receive comments on those submitted documents until this past May. We are continuing to work on the dedication process, but really anticipate that this could take another six to nine months. So anywhere from December of twenty twenty-three to March of twenty twenty-four. And in addition to this plan, we also submitted a letter from the DOT that they had no, take no exception to changing this condition to a to prior to certificate of occupancy. And I'll also note that just last week, we received our final, final technical comments from the state DOT on the, on their plan review, where that email we received last week, and I believe Mr. Seoli and Ms. Gray were copied on that basically indicated that we can proceed from from stage two, the technical review into stage three of the permit, which is the contractor's papers were contractors' paperwork. Um but we cannot proceed to that until the uh dedication of the easement is completed. So we have some work to do with that. Uh we are continuing to work through it. Um and hope to get it done as quick as possible, but we're trying to be as proactive as we can so that the district can meet their, can start construction and not have um issues with increasing costs due to, to, due to the delays in the project.
Right. And what we're proposing then is to change the uh condition from one of set being satisfied before building permits are, are issued to the C O V. So that hopefully we'll give you enough time to, to get through the uh this, this permit process and dedication process and not slow you up.
Yeah. That's correct.
Okay. So. Yep, very good. Thank you. Okay, any questions on this?
Yeah.
If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution that's before us, uh that amends that condition, the timing? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're all set. Very good. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
In the spirit of the first applicant, woo-hoo! Good night, everybody.
Thank you very much.
The D O T to deal with, but it's good practice. All right.
Yes, it is. Good night.
Good night.
We're worried about you.
Uh we now go to our next item, which is the uh proposed amendment to uh a resolution of approval, excuse me, for Chappaqua Crossing East Village four hundred eighty Bedford Road. This is a request for amendment to uh a resolution and also for uh the timing uh approval.
Good uh, good evening, uh Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh my name is David Cooper. I'm a partner with the law firm of Zarin and Stein Metz. Here tonight representing uh Toll Brothers, the developer of the residential component. Jennifer, I have the same issue on my, on my side as well, so.
I need a nice background like you.
That's right. That, well, that's, that's why I've got my background. Sorry, everyone. The uh residential component at the Chappaqua Crossing East Village parcel D. Uh with me is Greg Otis uh from Toll Brothers, the Senior uh Land Development Manager. Um we are requesting a modification to the one condition, condition number fifty-seven A of the East Village Site Plan Approval, which was last amended in September of twenty twenty-one. The uh condition uh indicated that the Bedford Road Route one seventeen improvements must be completed, quote, to the satisfaction of the D O T before the thirty-second uh building permit can be issued on the residential side. The uh S B G, the retail owner, completed the uh Route seventeen improvements in April of twenty twenty-two. Um in fact, we submitted a letter from the D O T uh confirming that there were no uh further punch list items for that work. Um but unfortunately, the D O T cannot close out that work permit because what they did was they tied it also to improvements occurring on the Sawmill River Parkway, um which for the most part are actually uh completed except for signaling uh synchronization with the M T A. So um while the improvements themselves have been for on, on Route seventeen, one seventeen have been completed, uh the D O T has not closed out the permit because they're still working with the M T A on signalization issues on the Sawmill Parkway. Um speaking of, of O I, um so we're sitting here, uh Toll Brothers is sitting here looking for the thirty-second building permit and can't uh obtain that right now because of this condition. So what we're, what we're respectfully requesting that the board do is, is amend this condition. We've proposed is actually to deem it complete because the um improvements have been uh completed. They just, the, the D O T hasn't closed the permit itself out because they're waiting for other, other uh improvements or to be completed. Um we have seen the draft resolution and understand that um uh the board is considering instead moving the condition to the uh sixty-third C of O. You know, we, we would respectfully request that it be deemed uh complete, but happy to talk about the, that alternative approach, um should the board desire.
Well, perhaps uh either you or Mr. Otis can give us an update where you are on this. Uh I want to remind the applicant that you are the applicant and it's really up to the applicant to get the M T A and the D O T off the dime to get this done. It's not the town's responsibility. The town is just an approving agency. So uh we don't want to hold you up. We want to work with you, but at the same token, we don't want to be sitting here at the end with uh a problem and uh without leverage. So where are you? Where is the applicant with regard to the D O T and the M T A problems?
So on, on the Sawmill River improvements, we're not the applicant. Uh we don't actually have standing uh on, on that app, on that permit, which is, which is the issue. The town is a co-applicant along, uh I think with, with the D O T. Um so we have, we Toll Brothers has been trying to push what I would call from the sidelines. Um but, but because we don't, we're not a permittee on that permit, um we, we don't really have standing with, with either party to, to push this.
Is, is uh the previous owner or Summit Greenfield still a applicant or co-applicant in that process?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, they are. And.
Toll Brothers is therefore dependent upon Summit Greenfield in, in moving this forward because you made a deal with Summit Greenfield. I understand that the town is a co, uh co-permittee or co-applicant on this, but
That.
It's really not us that really needs to push this to a conclusion.
Oh, that's.
Which, which, which condition are we talking about? The, the one seven, the, the actual condition of the?
It doesn't matter. They're linked. So you have to satisfy both. I mean, we didn't link them. The D O T linked them. That was a long time ago. Long before you guys were involved, for whatever reason, who knows why, the D O T decided to link it. Maybe to exercise leverage on the town and maybe to exercise leverage on Summit Greenfield, probably both. But they linked it. We understand that uh, you know, one seventeen, the Bedford Road is, is, is complete, done, uh finished. But they still haven't signed off on it because they, the D O T, uh linked the Sawmill project with the one seventeen.
Right. It's, it's what we're asking for is, is a practical solution to this because, because the issue is the, because the condition itself in your approval or, or the, the work itself has been completed. Don't stop the construction on, on the residential portions. There are people that are, that are excited to move in and become residents in the, in the town. So at, at the very least, you know, please adopt the resolution that's before you that moves it to the sixty-third C of O, which gives us hopefully enough time to push the M T A and the D O T to get, to get that other project completed. Um but don't, you know, keep the, the, the condition as it is right now because that's really.
We understand. Uh we're, we're, we're going to work with you on that, but I, I'm just not quite sure. Personally, I'm not quite sure. Yeah, I, I think frankly, speaking for myself, again, uh we understand the frustration that we all have in dealing with uh some of the state agencies. And we, we all deal with them. And uh
It's much all the state.
Yes, it's, it's almost embarrassing. I just listened to the fire department saying, we, we just sat here, just you shake your head. You gotta be kidding. But anyway, uh it is, it's, it's a problem that is here for the applicant and, and um I, I for one wouldn't be comfortable with a cart launch. And what I'm suggesting is I think the certificate of occupancy is frankly too broad at this stage without knowing where you guys are and without kicking these, these folks in the backside to move them along. But I, we also don't want to hold you up. So um you know, we've done it before on building permits. Uh I think C O Vs uh in going that far out is perhaps a little bit too much. Um so I, I was going to propose to the, the board that something in between. I, we want to get you forward, but we frankly, I, I think it would be very helpful to hear back from, from you in September when we meet again to see what progress we've made. In the meantime, you know, expand the B P's out to um something further. Your, your, your block now is thirty-two, so do something further on B P's, maybe go out to sixty-three on B P's, but C O Vs, maybe something halfway. Uh again, uh anticipating that we would want to see you in, in the next two months to see what's going on with these agencies. Um and, and also if, if, you know, as you say, we are uh co-applicants on this, uh perhaps, you know, we, we, the town leaders can exercise some sort of uh pressure on, on the, the D O T and the M T A. So but someone's got to, someone's got to get these two state agencies to wake up and do something here. This is not rocket science. I mean, it, it's terrible to even be talking about this. You guys are waiting for the M T A and D O T to finalize signalization, which is critically important. I mean.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I, we, we couldn't agree with you more. The, the only thing I would say is, is please don't take it out on Toll Brothers.
We're not taking it out, but at the same token, we want, I think, for myself, uh we want to see you involved in this uh to the greatest extent possible so that there is, you know, substantial skin in the game to get this going without hurting your, your construction process.
So I, I guess, I'm sorry, I guess I would ask um to what extent the uh does completion of the one seventeen improvements contribute to the functionality of the transportation system? Which will, uh which your development will depend on? If it turns out if, if, if we're only using, I'm not suggesting this is what we're doing, but if we are using partially left the Toll Brothers as leverage somehow through whatever process to get this thing done for the, for the larger benefit of the town, then, then, you know, maybe that's appropriate, maybe it's inappropriate. But I'm really concerned about it. My question has to do with, if we were to say, you know what, go ahead and build all the units. Because this is something which is actually out of your ability to control. It's up to others. Does the completion of all those units, the incompletion of the one seventeen improvements? Uh does the completion of, would the completion of all your units impact that intersection to the extent that would be dysfunctional because those improvements weren't, weren't made? Are they actually linked functionally or not? And if they aren't linked functionally, I'm not sure that, maybe I'm wrong, I'm not sure that, that, that uh we would have justification for saying you can't just go ahead and finish.
Well, and, and I, I don't believe they're linked functionally, but also I would just refer back to your condition. I mean, the condition that you drafted, you, you know, as a result of, of, of a, of a complete secret review and, and a full-blown and a long process was not that both projects be completed before the, before the thirty-second uh building permit, but, but just the one seventeen, which has been. Right? That the impact or the mitigation that, that the board was concerned with has been completed. It's just they can't close out the, the, the permit. It's, it's paperwork. It's not, it's, it's not mitigation anymore.
Oh, wait, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. I misspoke. I meant the Sawmill uh intersection improvements. Those are the ones that are holding you up.
Only becau- only because administratively the D O T linked it to, to the one seventeen improvements, which were was mitigation as uh that was tied to the residential component.
I, I understand. And it's a functionality of that intersection that may or may not be impacted by the completion of your project. If the improvements are made and if, if, to me, if there's no if there, if, if there's no consequence to the functionality of that intersection, um then I would, I would be interested in thinking about maybe relieving you of, of, of this linkage between the two. And let you just go ahead and finish, but I could be wrong about that.
Well, it seems to me that uh perhaps the, the, the D O T in its linkage of these two projects uh tie them in because they are inherently part of the same uh traffic pattern, traffic area. So the fact that for whatever reason, I don't know what it is, and I don't know if the applicant knows. I don't know what this um issue is with the signalization. But it seems to me that if, if that has not been finalized to the, to the design specifications that have been set forth by the D O T and the M T A, it seems to me that it's not finished. And if it's not finished, that could be something that if we go ahead and, and approve this and, and, you know, you guys are up and running, you have all these condominiums up and, and traffic going up and down, and we don't have the signalization completed to the extent that it's supposed to be, we might have a dangerous situation. By the same token, I don't know how this, it works. Uh this is up to a traffic engineer, but to the extent that they haven't signed off even on the Bedford Road and the old Reader's Digest Road intersection, perhaps that somehow is linked also with the signalization and the overall operation of this entire traffic pattern. Um and I think, I think the condition was not that we thought it was complete or the D O T thought it was complete or that the applicant thought it was complete up there at one seventeen, but it was a sign-off by the D O T which would signal that it's, it's done. So I think you're, you're requesting us to um, you know, to a certain extent, we've already done so, partially to, to help you out and to move you along. But I think it becomes uh somewhat tenuous that we start getting so far over our skis ahead of the D O T. Uh we might conceivably have uh issues. And it's possible that we even put the town, we jeopardize the town's liability exposure because we're getting ahead of the D O T and the M T A on, on what they feel is the appropriate uh resolution of this traffic pattern, this whole area.
Let me ask, I'm sorry, let me just ask, ask a question here. The D O T is doing what they're doing. They have no, unless I'm mistaken, they have no authority or interest in our resolutions and in our building permits and in our C O permits.
That. Well, I, I, I don't know. I agree with that. I, I, again, I, it's probably this case, but it could be that there is in their eyes, we don't want this project finished until the roads are finished to our specification with the M T A. So we don't want all that traffic being introduced.
But that wasn't the, the condition. I mean, the, the only reason why I'm, I'm jumping in and trying to react here is, is i- if, if this board was concerned about that impact as, as being, you know, linked together, then the condition would have said that, right? Because, because you guys definitely did your homework and, and definitely looked at all these issues and, and traffic issues. And the condition itself was only related to one seventeen, not the linkage because the D O T decided to link it administratively or is not a suggestion that there's an impact that you guys missed. So all I, all we're asking for is if, if you're not, if you're not willing to, to completely, you would say it's satisfied. We, we understand that you want, you want the administrative sign-off, but don't hamstring progress on, on the development waiting for, as you've said, the D O T and the M T A to difficult uh state agencies to, to see eye to eye to, to agree on it. At least give Toll Brothers is trying to do the right thing here and, 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 and build homes that were approved so people can move in to be the ability to move beyond the thirty-first building now so that there is leeway. If, if you want to do it so that it's the sixty-third, so that we've, we've got to come back if, and in, you know, by the sixty-third, if we're still not there and report what, what's going on, that's fine, but, but don't hamstring it so that we're, they're stuck at thirty-one and.
Question. I think I, we, we kind of understand what you're saying. Um the first question is, um what is the status in both these departments as far as you know currently? Because I think that's what Bob's asking. And what we're saying is, is there a way for us to know more regularly what is the status with these two agencies? Because you are our only hope in making sure it's all signed off and that this, that the town is not stopped trying to do this in the end. The second is how how involved is Summit Green? Because it seems like they are one of the applicants, co-applicants with the town. And the fact that you're sort of stuck with it, but you know, they've been involved with you. And so what is your strategy instead of getting them to help you get this done? And I think what we're asking is, what is the status today? And can we see the status two months from now?
So um to answer your question, all of the required infrastructure improvements down at the Sawmill River Parkway have been completed by S G Chappaqua. The final stage of the project is for the D O T and the M T A to coordinate the signalization controls and perform the actual signal switch over. So we've completed S G Chappaqua, the town is the co-applicant. All of the infrastructure has been completed. We are at their mercy to perform their work to complete the project. And as David indicated earlier, the work. And as David indicated earlier, the work associated with the 117 improvements is 100% complete. We received a letter from the DOT indicating that they do not anticipate any punch list items associated with it. And we continue to push. We hold a financial incentive on SG Chapacqua to complete this work. So Toll Brothers and SG Chapacqua do have stakes in this game. It's very important for us to continue to push. We appreciate the town as co applicants continuing to push. And we would like nothing more than this work to be completed as a group together with the town. And so we are at the position right now with the building department where they are sitting on stacks of plans to release building permits, but cannot do so. We are notifying the future homeowners of the current status that it's being held up by the town. We respectfully are trying to do what we're being tied to do, but our hands are, hands are kind of tied with the DOT and the MTA.
Where are you? We understand there's a backlog, so we want to break that, get you, get you through that. Where are you in terms of, you know, immediate need between now, the end of September for building permits and CFOs to get your, your sales completed? Between now and the end of September, what's the plan?
Yeah, we need, we need building permits released tomorrow to continue construction.
I understand. What, what's the number, what, what's the, what's the budget, for lack of a better word?
Well, I,
If we, if we, if we, you know, get together again, see what the process is or progresses, if any, with MTA and DOT.
How many permits do you have in that stack right now?
I, I believe it to be, you know, anywhere from six to 10 building permits. That could be in the pack right now.
So here, here's a thought that any potential liability or any impact on, on an intersection that's not complete yet would stem from CFOs, not building permits. Because if there's no CFO, there are no people in those units that are going through those intersections. So I, I guess, maybe I'd suggest that releasing the building permit, finding some room for them in the building permit process is fine. But we ought to be a little bit careful about release for the CFO.
I agree. I, I, I feel much more comfortable with the building permits. CFOs, I'm a little bit more cautious. But at the same token, they need CFOs also to, to complete the sales and get the money.
That's up to them.
So, yeah, but that's another, but it's, it's important. I think, I think it's really important for us to work with them as best as possible and, and not to handicap them. So, again, if, if, if your budget between now and the end of September is that you anticipate that you need, you know, another 30 building permits to, to get to 63, I, I don't have a problem with that. As I understand it, it was initially drafted, initially discussed as building permits, not CFOs. The CFOs is, is a little bit more concerned. By the same token, that's why I was thinking perhaps some sort of number halfway between the 32 and, and 63 would be a fair number between now and September to keep you going. And then we hear back to see to, to Canon's point, you know, where are we? What's, what's the status? And if you could, we'll pencil you in for one of the meetings and give us a report and let's, let's see, you know, where we all are on this, including us.
Right. Who's, who's, who's running point on, on the town? Because we're happy to work in tandem with them, but remember, we, we don't, we don't have standing. You know, like, we could call MTA and DOT every day, but they'll tell us, look, you're not a permadee.
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously, Mr. Otis is, is, is your guy that, to lean on SG. And I don't know, I, I don't know internally, Sabrina, who might be writing on this internally? Is that something that the town board would do? Town Board Council? Is it something that we would do? You, you would Bob and Building Department? I don't know how, how that would work. I'm happy to give out work to people. As you know. Do we have an idea who, Bob, any thoughts on that?
I can't give you an answer right now. We can discuss it with Jill, like, you know.
Yeah.
I can't give an answer right now.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, we, we would appreciate if you needed to change the language to building permit issuance for number 63.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm happy to, to support that. And I'm also happy to, to give you some leeway also on CFOs. Again, our purpose is not to hold you guys up. You guys are moving along. Looks like a great product. We understand that there's a great deal of interest. And, you know, we want to promote that as much as possible and hold you up. So I, I mean, I would entertain a, a motion, or I'd make a motion to amend the language from changing it from 63 CFOs to 63 building permits. And again, I think it's, they're locked in right now at 32 CFOs. So I would suggest something, maybe in the area of 45 CFOs. Between now and, and, well, that's what we do. And then pencil you in for the September, second September meeting and get a status update. Nor did I.
I've heard it.
Okay. So, okay. So what we'll do is, as amended is, so we have a motion as, as amended. Do we have approval for that amended resolution? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, and what we'll do is we'll pencil you in for, I don't know what the meeting is in September.
The second meeting is September 19th.
Okay. Great. So all we would just need is just, you know, a verbal or, you know, just tell us where you are and where we are with our friends at DOT and MTA. And internally, we'll try to figure out what we're doing as well, to see if we can lend some, some assistance.
We appreciate that. What was, what was the number of CFOs? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Forty-five.
Okay.
Sixty-three BP's and forty-five CEOs.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have, our next item is, we have the minutes of June 6. I didn't have any comments on those. Any changes?
I totally agree. That's always worth stuff with it.
Yep. Oh, yeah, yeah. So, stay going for a second?
Yes, we have to wait.
Okay, so we have to wait. Yeah, I think, you know, I just, it's important that we, the towns are left out.
Because once their CEOs are done, what do we need? Yeah, we also want to get it done. I, I hear you.
DOT is just one of the state agencies.
But if anything, they are, I mean, that's why I asked the question about how Summit Green involved. Because if they're not, which, there's no way they would have, they have to be.
And so that's the issue because
I'm sure they're calling each other to get it done.
Yeah, they have to lean on Summit Green.
And I'm, I'm sure we, we can help, but.
Waiting for one more person to come back into the minutes.
He was here, actually.
Where's Dick? Okay, Dick is back, so we can, we can look at the June 6.
Is Tom there? We need a quorum of the board physically present.
I'll be right back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can you see us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I saw an empty seat where Tom sits. I don't know if he was like leaning, grabbing something under the desk or something.
Yeah, maybe we should set up like dummies that we can, you know, have to put in the chair and, and, you know, sort of that, make it fuzzy, so no one can understand what it is.
Weekend at Bernie's.
I was gonna say, you know, Dick, that would, that's a redundancy in some people's eyes. Okay, we're back. So we have the minutes of June 6. So I don't think there are any changes or amendments to it, and not seeing anyone talking about it. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of June 6? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So the next item is a discussion item, the NG Zero Legislation 503, we have a working group session. It's a G-Tongue. And, and Jennifer, anyone else who is up on this, Eldon obviously is not here, so we don't have the benefit of his, his report.
So, I guess I, it's hard to figure out what to say about it. I, I, I mean, there was a meeting and there was a review of the latest version of the zoning text, draft zoning text that the group went through. And I, it was a mistake and I saw in my inbox, I think there is a, a revised version now available based on that meeting. I haven't opened it up and looked at it yet.
Oh, can we get a copy of that?
It was just sent tonight, so it hasn't even been received.
Okay.
It'll be received tomorrow and circulated to everybody.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I must be mistaken. I thought I saw something this morning or yesterday. In any event, it
Not unless you got a preview of it.
That would be unusual, but I'll look for that. Thank you, Sabrina. It appears as though the the project as being proposed is pretty much moving forward through the process and through the work group process. Pretty much, I think, as, as proposed by Mr. Davis. And there were some discussions that you may or may not be aware of, some alternate plans that have been, have been put before the town and the group with respect to distribution of retail on the ground floor, but that's pretty much the extent of of the, of the changes, proposed changes, offer changes in response to some of our conversations. There are an awful lot of conversation about building height and about a number of units and about building entrances and conversations about garage entrances and all of the things that I think are important to talk about. And there were comments made, but the only response that we've gotten from the Mr. Davis and his group were the comments relating to amount of retail and where. And, and in link to the concern about the building frontage at the ground floor and whether it's appropriate or good for the town to have parking garages and bicycle, bicycle storage there. And those two issues are linked, not issues. Those two questions are linked. They may, some may see them as issues. I do. But those two things are linked because there was the proposal to replace the bicycle storage, which is, when the original plan was, I think it was 70, 80 feet long. Forgive me if I had the numbers wrong, but it was a large expanse of the frontage at the ground floor of the project with retail, because some people wanted to have more retail, thought that would be appropriate. I, I wasn't a supporter necessarily of more retail. I think that we ought to have, my personal feeling, and I think it's the planning board's feeling that we propose that maybe there ought to be residential, you know, it's on the ground floor instead. But nonetheless, the proposal came back with a drawing that showed retail, which was that length, 70, 80 feet, 60 feet, I forget, and 13 feet deep. And the group looked at that and decided that that's really not really a sincerely proposed retail space that, that you really can't logically lease that. The geometries just don't make sense. So the, Mr. Davis had said that, well, you know, we'll work with you to figure out where else to put the retail. And so I haven't seen yet another plan related to that. There was some discussion where, where it may go and I, there was no conclusion to that. But that's the extent of the, of the changes that the applicant has been willing to make in the plan and in the design. So to my perspective, to my point of view, I think that the, 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 the proposal is really not going, I, I think it's going to end up being essentially, essentially what's been proposed. I don't think that the, the, Mr. Davis is going to make any substantive changes beyond those that I've just mentioned. He may, but there's no evidence of that yet. So I don't, I, I don't know what the immediate next steps are for the, for the town board and I don't, I'm it's not likely. I think they're going to call for another work session. My guess is that they are going to, my guess is that they're going to wrap it up. I think that there was some discussion of there being a, a vote on the, on the resolution in September, early September. These dates, you know, as we know, these dates can move, but I think that's where they are right now. And Sabrina, if you have another take on that, I'd be happy to have you chime in.
Yeah, I, I don't really, I don't really have a different take. You know, I'm not sure when the town board will be primed to vote or close the public hearing. I know that there is, uh, next week is a continuation of the public hearing. The applicant submitted something at 7:32 PM this evening, which needs to be circulated. I have been asked to introduce the environmental impact areas to the town board for next Tuesday, and the town's traffic consultant will be presenting their review of the applicant's traffic information to date at the meeting on the 25th.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Sabrina, I, I really misspoke. I didn't, I, I didn't mean to say they're going to vote, but they will be, as I understand, closing the public hearing in early September. There's a lot more, I think, work to be done with respect to impact reviews and all those things before they come to vote. So I misspoke, forgive me.
Yeah. So, so that, that's as much as I know, Tom. You know, I'm kind of behind the scenes trying to put everything together as requested by the town board. You know, and we, we were really waiting for the information that came in tonight. I haven't had an opportunity to review it to see if it's responsive to what the work group had discussed and contains the information that the town needs to really move forward on an environmental determination.
Okay. Jennifer, did you have anything on this as well or no?
No, I, I don't have any further information.
So I guess my take on this, where we are right now in all of this, is that the planning board has put forward in our referral process, put forward what we believe are some important principles with respect to a process and B design. And that the town board so far doesn't appear in, and as we said, it's not over. The town board so far doesn't seem to have been moved in any of the discussions that we've been talking about to consider those, those recommendations in their process or in the design. And there is the public review session or comment period will be over, I guess, in September, and maybe they'll be taking up those thoughts then. I would have thought that if they were going to take them up, that they would be in the conversation now during the public comment period. But they aren't, and my, my concern is that they won't be. And I personally think that that's, personally, institutionally, I think that's a problem, because I am a member of the planning board and I think that institutionally, we ought to be having, I think, more of a, a better audience in this process. And I may be mischaracterizing that, but that's how I feel. And then just as a professional, as an architect, as a planner, I just, I, I think that this thing with respect to its content is, is really really not good for the town. I don't know where the planning board goes from here in this process, other than just hanging on and waiting for their next step. I don't think that we're going to get called to another work session. Perhaps some of our feelings have changed with regard to content and process as a result of these meetings. Mine hasn't. Mine haven't. Maybe we just wait until, I think that there will be a necessary referral of whatever EIS step they're going to take. Is that, is that right, Jennifer? Or are we, are we, are they not obligated to do that?
No, I mean, if there was a, they haven't made a secret determinate, a term, determination yet. So you received their circulation of notice of intent to be lead agency. You received that. Uh, you received that back towards the end of twenty twenty two, I believe, and it was on an agenda for discussion. Um, but other than that, there is no required referral to your board as it relates to SECR. Um, unless we get to a, a positive declaration, finding that there may be one or more significant adverse impacts.
And then, and that we would be, we would get referral because we are an involved agency or an interested agency?
Well, you always have an opportunity to, to comment on, on secret issues. You're an involved agency. Um, you always have a, or at least involved or, or interested. It depends on what the final language of the, the local law is, um, with respect to your approval authority. But, um, you always have an opportunity, whether you're an involved agency or an interested agency, to submit comments to the lead agency with respect to environmental impacts, which you've done in your comment memos so far to the board. Um, so you've done, you've done that already. Um, you may wish to supplement that, um, based on any new information, but there's no formal referral as it relates to SECR that would be forthcoming.
Now, I, I, I would not characterize our comments as being, uh, environmental or SECR related. They were more.
There was one.
Some design, site design issues. I don't think we got to the, um, there was no reason to, we haven't seen.
There was one memo I saw that had a heading of, of SECR comments or, or something along those lines.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there, there was. Those were, uh, projections of issues that we thought maybe ought to be addressed in SECR, but it couldn't possibly be a response to any secret action by the town board, because there hasn't been any action with regard to SECR of the town board that's been referred to us. So I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't think there was ever the intent that that would cover for or, or, um, be a substitution for any further secret comment, formal secret, uh, comment that we might be asked to give.
Yeah, so, and I'm telling you, you're not going to be formally asked to give any further secret comment. At least there, there's nothing provided in the SECR regulations for that. But you do independently, as an interested or involved agency, have the ability to provide comments at any time. Um, particularly, you know, there is a possibility that the, the town board could issue a negative declaration, which would conclude the SECR process. So if you do have SECR related comments, you would want to get those to the lead agency prior to them making that determination.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, I, I, whatever that was, that, um, memo, I think was more or less, uh, sort of like an informal scoping of issues that we would recommend that they, uh, consider.
I think that there, if you look at the memo in detail, you can derive certain comments that belong under SECR as comments in regards to community character aesthetics, that type of thing, as well as your suggestions regarding a scoping document.
Good, good. Okay. So, um, as, as far as I can see and understand from listening here is that, um, really in terms of, of, you know, of where we are as a planning board, I think we're basically finished with this unless there is some sort of other specific referral back to us. And, uh, we are free as either an interested agency or an involved agency, whatever that status might be.
You are an interested agency.
Interested to, to, uh, issue comments, you know, just like any member of the public can do. Okay. Good. That, uh, sort of defines the, uh, the situation. Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Alrighty. Very good. Well, not seeing anything else. Is there a motion to, uh, uh, close the meeting? So. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.